Pardon the language.
Case we forgot.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first of all, um, we need to, if someone would make a motion to add an item to our agenda, a discussion of the assistant principal job at North Berwick, we'd like to do that before we go into the employment of employees.
I'll make it.
Okay.
Second it.
Got it. All those in favor? Oh, we don't vote till.
Yeah, but you just did the addition, so we're getting.
It's just the addition. Yeah, okay.
I can go first. The first thing we need to um do, we added that to the agenda, so we'll talk about that before we move into the nomination process of that position. We need to reaffirm the vote that we had for the transportation director. There was a computer, the camera wasn't working on a computer, so we just want to make sure we're doing this right now in this this meeting, this venue, to make sure we just have that in the minutes again. Um, those members that were present were Lauren, Ally, Elva, Peg, Nancy, and Nancy, and Jerry. So we need to, I know Elva's not here, but we still have enough members that were at that meeting to do that vote. So we need to have a motion again, a second, and then the vote for that. I know we had a discussion at that time, so just moving the motion to vote.
I make the motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Okay, everybody that was there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. Want to make sure we are.
We probably should say, because some of you new don't realize this, but when we're voting remotely, you need to be able to hear us and see us, or it's not official. Okay, so we all know, right?
And to be honest, we, um, we, in the middle of the whole COVID situation, we added the roll call piece, which we hadn't done before prior to that. And so honestly, we did not do the roll call piece, and that was our bad. So we just wanted, we added with attorneys to make sure, we wanted to make sure we were cool, and so he said just reconfirm it, and that's what we did.
So I think the other thing would be if we get in that situation again and your technology's not working, you could just let us know so that we can like problem solve through some of that too, because there could be other things that come up as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, discussion of the assistant principal job at North Berwick. There's been quite a bit of emailing going on, so I just, if people have a view or opinion to one way or the other, if you could cut up, give us a synopsis of what your points are, reasons for, reasons against, um, and then we can go from there.
I can, I guess, I mean, I could start. I sent some, uh, some questions, um, just a justification for the position. Again, I, I shared, um, with board members, um, my previous experiences as, as an administrator for, in, I was administrator for 13 years, so it wasn't a short period of time. Granted, it was in Pennsylvania, however, um, as I read our job descriptions here, job descriptions weren't, um, I mean, they're written differently, different school systems, but essentially it was the exact same role. Um, and, and I explained that my responsibilities were supervision, evaluation of staff. My student sizes, um, were 340 students, um, in addition to transportation director at one, um, district. Um, the second district, it was 320 students, give or take, um, in two different buildings that were 20 minutes apart. And there were no assistant principals in neither one of those positions. And so when I looked at North Fork Elementary, and we have 215 students in one building, I just needed a justification for why we have, why we have a need for, um, an assistant principal at that building. That's really what I was looking for. In person, understand what this is. I know that they have a job description and all that, but a just, a justification for why a assistant principal is necessary for the supervision of 215 students and related staff.
Josh, I have a question. We spent a lot of time going back and forth over budget over the spring, and you didn't bring up any questions about this particular position or any position at the administrative level, to my memory. Why is this an issue now?
Actually, I did bring it up. Um, I did bring it up and said that I, I would like our board to look at all administrative positions, and that was declined by the board.
Okay.
And that would be my question, is it was declined by the board. So just as a point of process, I'm not sure how this is coming back up again without having it go to the board chair to ask if it wanted to be reviewed again, because we did talk about it once, and we agreed to keep the, or not address it at that time, so I'm not sure what's happening now.
But yeah, there was quite, quite a few comments about it, and I mean, before we go into an approving or not approving whoever it is, I think we need to just get our, so get, all get on the same page. Right about it.
Um, so I totally, I wasn't here during the budget process last year, so I don't know what was said and what wasn't said. But I think as always, it's like good to look at kind of evidence-based results from different positions, which is what I tried to find. Um, I did find a pretty comprehensive study done by the Wallace Foundation that talks about some of the roles of assistant prin- assistant principals. So some of the things I found that maybe, um, would address what you were talking about, um, is it says they're kind of a stepping stone to principalship. Uh, they can contribute to a more equitable, equitable pathway to the principalship, uh, where we often see, uh, people of color like underrepresented in a principal role. This can be a great stepping stone to get them there. Um, assistant principals are uniquely positioned to promote equitable outcomes for students. They can help address principal attrition and teacher shortages, and they come with experience. Um, opportunities that come with experience as an assistant principal might be, uh, in, important for effective school leadership. I also saw that a lot of schools are moving to more of a team model where your assistant principal is working with multiple leaders in the school to kind of run the whole operation as opposed to it all falling off to the principal, which I think is great. Um, when we're talking about retaining employees, I think it's really important that we optimize the role, like if we are spending the money on that role. I hope and assume you guys are optimizing it, um, through pathways to principalship and things like that. And I mean, I would love to hear what principals have to say about what they need.
I, I would too, and I just, I think doing it at this juncture is making it incredibly hard on the principal and the hopefully denominated person to do this, what, two weeks before school starts? Because I'm sure the principal has what she thinks she's gonna do, and there's an outline for what the assistant principal's gonna handle, and to change that right now, I think that would be unfair to them and to the students. Um, and we're having a study done of all the district. Space, how many kids, are we gonna move grades around, all that stuff, and I think, um, after that study comes back, then if we want to reevaluate, you know, the administrative position, I, you know, we've had some evidence at least to go back.
That's a great point, because we may see a shift in building structure and population, and that would be a good time to look at. But yeah, I think the position has shown itself to be valuable in our district, so I wouldn't want to remove it at this point.
Josh?
Hey, just referring, I've been doing a deep dive in policy, um, and just, you know, policy DEA does not say that we consider financial decisions only at the budget time. We, we are, as a board, we are charged to consider the financial decisions of every, uh, financial impact of every single one of our decisions, regardless of the timing. Um, I've obviously been doing this a long time. It's actually more work to bring someone new in, because you, you, it requires, I mean, this is living in industry, right? To train them and teach them everything is initially a lot more work than not having anyone to train initially. Um, and I, I understand that, you know, uh, you know, long-term, if you play that out, yeah, it's a big help. Again, though, I, I'm just going back to that fundamental question. You know, I understand the need, even in the study that, um, Allison shared, right? In that study, it says that they have an average of 1.8 assistant principals, 1.8 per 1,000 students. That's less than one assistant principal per 500 students. And we are, have an opportunity, I, I don't, I don't like to dismiss people after they're working for the district. This is an opportunity where someone has taken another job, and we have an opportunity to reduce it to an appropriate supervision and load level. And I just think it's irresponsible for us as a board to not consider that opportunity, not hear the justification, listen to the study. Yes, assistant principals make a big difference. I was an assistant principal before I became principal. I think being an assistant principal before you're a principal is paramount, 100%. Again, we're talking about 215 students, and I haven't heard an appropriate justification for that cost. I haven't found any written studies saying that that's necessary, the study that, again, it's hard to find. There's not a lot of research on assistant principals, that is true, right? But the information that's out there is approximately for 400 to 500 students is when we add assistant principals.
I think that might be a misrepresentation of that statistic. So what they're doing is they're taking an average of 70 schools, some of which have one assistant principal, some multiple and some none. But the findings remain that the schools with the assistant principals have more equitable pathways to principalship. They have more support for principals, um, and principal attrition. So I think to say that it's only representing students with, uh, schools of 500 or more is not exactly what that study.
No, I'm saying is the average, they have an assistant, 1.8 assistant principals per thousand students, that's.
But that's not the measure of its efficacy. There's, if there's an assistant principal there, they are having these benefits. If they are not there, they aren't.
Okay.
According to.
Is it appropriate to ask our principal? What her take is on what this is going to mean to her job and to her students and to her staff?
And before she speaks, I, because I want to say like, not my job, but I'm in there often, this school particularly. And honestly, my question is the opposite. Like, I'm like, how is this only a halftime position? Like, the amount of kids, the amount of like student facing time, I see, or would see our previous assistant principal, like with, it, I'm shocked that it's still only halftime, so almost the opposite kind of feeling. She's, she was busy.
I think it's important, no, it's a halftime position. We're not discussing a full-time position. Um, and I've personally been administrator in different districts as well, and I've never not had an assistant principal. Every school I've been a principal in has had about 260 students, which is our current number of enrollment at North Berwick, all the way up to 400, and I've always had an AP, and on all of those schools, it was a full-time position, even with a school of 260. And the benefits of that, I can't even share in this quick conversation, because it is so much bigger than that. It's the efficacy, collective efficacy of leadership. Of our 260 students, 15% of them require specialized instruction, whether that's Excel, IAP, or 504. That's a pretty large number for a small school. That's not including our students that receive behavioral support, and that is also a large number. That's about 10% too. I'm grateful that the board approved my behavior interventionist position, but that position's on administrative role. The work that needs to be done with our students that do receive the high-low behavior score is an administrator. You need to have the training to appropriately support that need. Putting students aside just for a moment, we evaluate, primary evaluate 35 staff. That's a large number. Um, that means that I am the direct supervisor for them. I'm the one that does the observations. I do the formal meetings. I do the follow-up conversations. Um, of those 35 staff, 20-something are direct teaching with students, where they're expected to come up with curriculum instruction. Big work at North Berwick this year really is factoring in creating updated unit maps for our curriculum. That's a lofty goal to be done. We want to create, um, updated eight-week units across all grade levels. So that's for literacy and science, and we're gonna try to sprinkle in social studies, the best of our abilities. That takes a ton of work, and that requires two administrators, a 1.5, to support that planning with teachers. Although we only have 35 that we primarily evaluate, when you factor in facilities and special education, the number gets to 52. Um, so that's a large staff. Um, the assistant principal works with me. We divide it up. So I am the primary evaluator for about 18, and the AP is the primary evaluator for about, I don't know, the office of that, 17. Um, but that doesn't mean that we don't primary, that primarily evaluate together. We sit down and all the conversations together. We collaborate on observation feedback. Um, evaluation is a humongous part of our job, and could I be the primary evaluator on my own for 38 staff? Yeah, of course I could. Am I gonna do it well? No. They're not gonna get the support that they need, especially in a year where we're trying to shift instruction, and we're really trying to shift the balance to have more student voice in our classroom. We want to bring kids into the conversation more. We want more project-based learning at North Berwick, and that work will be highlighted and magnified with the candidate sitting next to me right here. That's why he's here today. Um, in addition to the curriculum piece, um, curriculum is my forte. I love it. Um, I also like behaviors. I also like school culture. So does Asakyo, and I know we're not directly talking about the candidate right now, but that is another reason why he's sitting here. We're embarking on year two of PBIS. It's a big, big year ahead of us. We did great work last year. We are highly successful. Um, a, a report card for PBIS is called your TFI score. So a, a school that gets a 70 is considered like in a really good spot. We got a 67, which is really high for your first year. So we did big, big things. We gotta keep that momentum going. I'm not gonna do great the first year and not do so great the second year, right? We're gonna be better than that. So what we hope to do this year is bring in student council. We want to talk about our character traits, our core values. Every month we have a big assembly, um, and it's a big deal, but what I've always envisioned is having a student council film videos about what it means to be a brave bear, what it means to be respectful. Unlucky, I can figure out the print on all the different printers as well, so I also put together a video of the core values, totally honest about that. Asakyo can. So he fits that bill too, where I really want to tap into more of that visual communication piece. I would love to tap, tap into social media to communicate with parents in a better way. Um, these are all things that I could try to do on my own, but I won't do them as well, and I want to be as good as I can as a leader, and I want my AP, my 0.5 AP, to be as good as I can as a leader, so we as a staff can be as good as we can. The teachers in my building have a lot on their plate. They're managing indescribable amounts of social emotional needs of students post-COVID. We are still dealing with those effects across all of our buildings, and we're dealing with some pretty large literacy gaps too. So if I'm gonna put lofty goals on them to continue with year two of PBIS, which truly does shift the entire culture around the building. PBIS is a really big undertaking. I want to continue with year two of PBIS. We want to improve our literacy data even better. We're bringing in the literacy consultant that the district has always utilized, but we haven't before. And we're revamping our curriculum maps. Those are really lofty goals. For my teachers to be able to do that well, they deserve to have a 1.5 administrator to help them do that, because then having that support is inevitably gonna positively impact the students. So those are some quick things. Um, school culture, planning rewards, planning celebrations, bringing parents in. I want to open our doors more. Like, I'll give you a prime example of something that I've been overanalyzing. I want to have a PBIS night where I bring parents in. I need a thought partner to brainstorm what that looks like, right? Could I do that on my own with my team? Yeah, but having another person, an administrator, to help me think through all of those logistics, that's what is gonna make our school go from good to great. And North Berwick has the capability to be a leading school in Southern Maine, and I want to make that happen. But in order to make that happen, you really do need collective efficacy, and that's where that 0.5 position is really needed.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Jolly is exceptionally well spoken. That's why you're hired. Well done. Um, you know, the, uh, yes, to all those same things, the same, same loads. Um, I, ideally, that's, that is what you want. I struggle, um, and this will be on our last term, is I struggle with our middle school decision to cut a team of middle school teachers. And, and then add to our administration. I, I, I just see that we are, we are, I, I am a big believer in, in close contact to students, teachers. I would, I would much rather put our funds where, where classroom teachers are and, um, and, and reduce our, our, um, army of administration. And that's where I stand. I would much rather see us increase our teacher numbers and reduce our admin, admin numbers, and I believe that this is an opportunity to do that, and, um.
Can I share that? Okay, if I share.
And, and the other thing I wanted to share is, and then yes, yeah, I think the other thing I wanted to share is, is that, you know, in my building, yeah, I didn't have an assistant principal, but I had other elementary principals in my district that I called regularly. We, we actually met three times a week virtually, because it didn't make sense to drive to everybody's school. We bounced ideas all the time. Like, me not having assistant principal did not in any way, shape, or form take away the idea that I didn't have a buddy in the cage. I had elementary principals with me who were always sharing those ideas, when they bounced on ideas and planning things together. So, um, you know, I, I just think that we, we need to consider that piece too, so please.
I think, and across the state, across New England, we're always looking at the numbers of administrators in the district. I think it's, I think it's healthy to look at that, truly. Um, and I think it's important to put your money where it's most impactful for kids. When I made the decision to step out of the classroom and go into leadership, I overanalyzed it, because I wanted to make sure I was going where I was gonna be the best version that I could be and impact the greatest number of kids. And when I thought about it and I said, okay, I've been given good evaluations as a teacher, I've been a teacher leader, all of those things. If I step into administration, I'm gonna impact so many more students, and impact so many more teachers, and I can help them craft and perfect their practice. And that's inevitably gonna help more, more students. So I try to look at it from that mindset. Are we hiring the right administrators? Are we hiring people that are gonna positively, positively impact their staff and impact their student? And that's the mindset I went into with this interview process, finding the person I thought would have a big impact on our students.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on it? Who hasn't spoken yet?
I think that would, if I may. Because it really doesn't add or take anything away. I, I, I do believe the more people we have, the better off we are, the more hands, I mean, it's just, um, more, more adults per student pays. But I do also know that we only have 200 kids. The state recommends 300 before we bump up to the assistant. And I just, again, keep coming back to, when are we going to recognize that money doesn't grow on trees, and we need to be careful where we spend it? 200 is not a lot of kids when you, I know it is. I, and I hear what you, 200, 2, 216?
260.
It's gone up, because it was 216 in the, uh, in June or July, whenever, but that's fine. We're still not at 300. It's still a lot of kids. You still need to address them. They still have a lot of issues. But are we going to add more administrators for every school, every time we get? I just, I just question, where does it stop? So.
Recommendation of 300, that's for a full-time AP?
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
Yes, according to the, it's an old, it's 2000, it's 2018 report. I couldn't find anything newer than 2018. It's from the University of Maine, and it recommends to the state that the, you have an administrator for every 305 students. Uh, and then it also talked that the newer one was, and it's not out, it doesn't even have a lot of information yet, but they want to do it based on the number of teachers. But the number of teachers for administrator was closer to 100. So that really didn't, it just, it would just make.
That doesn't even make sense.
Yeah, it didn't even make sense at that point. So I'm not even gonna pursue that one, but the 300, 2018, I wish I could have found one a little newer, because I think maybe it would be a little bit closer, but I still, you know, I want to look at every one of our schools and wonder, do we add another assistant principal to Lebanon, because they have high numbers and they have the same issues? I just, and I don't mean Lebanon Elementary School, I mean the town, you know. I, I just don't know, and I would love to. When I taught, I brought the special ed kids, the self-contained classroom into my room, my regular ed room, because it gave me five paraprofessionals. I was not stupid. I knew what I wanted. But we can't do, so I just want to add to it. I still need to be very, very aware of our fiscal responsibility, as much as I would like to give everybody everything they want. I truly would like to, but, oh, that's gonna be, probably you're gonna hear me say it again and again and again. I've said enough.
We're not, to be clear, we're not adding a position. This is a position that existed, and that's, given those numbers, makes sense. So if at 300, they're saying you add one at 260 or 265, given students you still have coming, that half time.
At halftime, yeah.
Dovetails with that information, so.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Ready to move on? All right, employment of employees.
Okay, we are nominating Asakyo Donas this evening for the assistant principal part-time position in North Berwick Elementary School. Just to, um, summarize the process, there were, um, eight candidates that applied for the position. Five were extended interviews, four were interviewed. Um, and that was the first round at the building. There were eight staff members that participated in that, including the principal. So we had representation from the grade levels, from the office, the nurse's office. Uh, so there was a good vetted process at that point. Um, from that time, um, the, the team nominee brought forward to, to the next round of interviews, which were held at the central office. We did have board member representation at that time, um, and we interviewed the candidates, and we had checked references, and we, um, came to, to Asakyo, um, which the team also had come, come to. So, um, the nomination is before you this evening for Asakyo. Yes.
Moving, we go into executive session for personnel reasons.
The executive session is for what?
Personnel reasons. I, I ask questions I want to ask and you can discuss, but I cannot do that in our, in our public format. We need to go into executive session in order to discuss personnel.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not, no.
Can move to executives.
I guess I would need, I, I would need a little more reason than that. I mean.
Uh, it is certainly regarding the candidate that we are considering. I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest otherwise. I wouldn't bring it up otherwise.
Okay. It's, 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 it's legal. It's the right of the board to ask for that, so we can do that. Uh, okay, so Mr. Taber makes the motion.
Was there a second? A second.
Okay. Um, and so we will step out. We're gonna go out to the central.
Don't we have to vote to go into a second?
Yes, you do, sorry.
Um, all those, favor of the executive session? Three, opposed? Five?
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
So we need a motion to, um, for the nomination.
I make a motion for Asakyo for part-time, halftime assistant principal at North Berwick.
Second.
Second. Second there. Any further discussion?
What's the other half part of his job?
His communication director, correct?
Yes, it was this year.
And, uh, the literacy coach position I see was recently posted?
Has been posted, yes.
It was separated out.
Is there an alternate plan if that position is not filled? By halftime, someone wanting to do halftime literacy position?
The literacy position we've interviewed for, and we do have some strong candidates, and so I'm very confident that it will be filled.
Literacy or music?
Literacy.
Okay.
Josh, and is there, um, were any of the eight candidates that, um, applied for the position, did any of them have any literacy certifications?
For the assistant principal position?
Let me think about that. I don't, I don't think so.
Also, to add to that, and I, just for clarification, it was a perfect storm that the previous assistant principal was able to fill a halftime, like, like when we interviewed, one of the questions was, this is only a halftime position, like, is there something else for me halftime? Like, they're all very set, like, one has nothing to do with the other. So yes, well, it was lovely that, or, you know, that Ms. Anderson was able to fill that, that halftime role and the assistant principal halftime role. They are mutually exclusive, I believe, yes? Like, it's great if we can offer full-time employment between two halftime roles up and is in a district, but like, uh, Knowlton has just a halftime assistant principal, that she is a halftime employee of the district, and that is it, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong.
She does teacher certification and ed tech certification.
Okay, she does. So she does have a. She does, okay. Okay. Like, I think when we can fill it, but that doesn't have to be. Right?
Right, and some of the feedback that we received in exit interviews and throughout the path of having a, um, halftime literacy position is that it does sometimes get muddy, because coaching is, is one skill set and one process, and evaluation and supervision is a different one, and you want to be able to, as a coach, really build that, that skill set, so that when you are doing evaluation and supervision and evaluation, that you have, you know, that skill right there, and sometimes those, those two roles merge, and it's very, it's hard. So that's why we, we separated it out this time. Yeah.
Any further discussion?
I really, the movie. Good question.
Go ahead.
Don't we have a music position too that needs to be filled, part-time?
If, if this goes through, then yes.
Yes.
Yes, if this goes through, then yes.
Just, just.
Yes.
Thinking that there was another position out there.
Are you volunteering? Looking at me?
Oh, my word, you don't want me doing music. That would be my sister's, then, you know.
Anybody else? Okay, let's move the question off. Uh, supposed, all those in favor of getting Asakyo for the position? Three. Opposed? Congratulations. Before we adjourn, we need to talk about next week, right? And how many people actually can do next week?
Yes, yes.
We need to get, it's not tomorrow night now, it's next week?
No.
Okay.
So that's what we wanted to check. Um, we can add that to the agenda if you would like that added to the agenda. We just need to clarify the date.
I cannot do that.
Right, so, yeah. I think we've got a couple that can't.
I cannot.
Right. So we have the 22nd, there were four members that said that they were not able to make the meeting.
That's why I cannot.
Yeah, okay. So what we can do is move it to the 29th, which is the following week, which is, we're already in school. Um, that's the second day of school, so we can do that if that works, if that gives us more, um, attendance. And that will be in Lebanon at 6 o'clock. Does that work? Yep.
Okay.
Just everybody, can everybody do the 29th? No, not for Jerry.
I can't do this.
I can do the 29th. Okay. We'll have a, more of a quorum on the 29th.
Can you do ver- we're not going to be able to do virtual because.
Not the tour.
It's kind of be the tour. And after the tour.
I'm, I'm not carrying this with me.
Okay. Boat anchor, I'm, I'm not.
You know, someplace fun. You said it was 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock for the tour with a meeting start of 7.
And the meeting would be at?
Hanson, Hanson, right, likely at Hanson.
Yeah. Does that work for the majority?
It should. I'm expecting it to.
Missed it, Hanson again.
What did you say?
I'm, I missed the tour of, of Lebanon again.
Oh, you, oh, okay.
Yeah, I was, okay.
Send it another time maybe?
Yes.
Yeah, let's cut something out. Definitely. Definitely super important.
Well, I could just go over and meet with, right? I mean, if that's, if that's the tour that you're doing.
Yeah, it's definitely, I think you, yes, Kevin was going to be there to kind of just walk through the buildings and. Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, I can, I, I'll just call Heather.
Okay, okay.
When, when I'm, um.
Well, I was, I can't.
When I'm available.
Good.
Sounds good.
Are there any nicer community to do that? Cause I think as we look at having conversations about what we're going to do, I think, yes.
So we actually had some good.
We did have parents last year.
But yes, well.
We had a North Berwick contingent that came through everyone.
Everyone was good in the building.
Yeah, I do remember that, we had a few people with us, like, I mean, it wasn't like, I mean, talking about like parents of students.
Yes, win harem in.
It is.
Up into the public.
Yes.
And the meeting's right.
They, for a tour of like the cellar and stuff, I don't know if people come in generally.
They don't go in the basement.
But if, if they were, if they were concerned, you know, I mean, if the word got out.
Yes.
And.
That's what, I think it just thinks the words should get out.
Yeah, yes.
Being very well behaved on this.
Trying, right?
Yeah, I know.
Where would, what room will the meeting be in?
I don't know yet.
Okay, could you send that out when you do?
Yeah.
We did it in the library, didn't we?
No.
When you had Elliot, we went over to Elliot's room.
Two years ago.
We did it at Elliot's.
It was in the library.
Okay.
Last year.
It was Elliot, Elliot.
Yes.
Or when the agenda is shared.
Yeah, we'll just try to make it work.
It will be.
Yeah, the biggest available space.
So you said, yes, public and yes, we are pushing this out to let public know.
Yes, yes.
I heard a rumor that they're going to start doing meetings in the gymnasium at the Hanson School.
September.
Well, this is close enough, do you think that?
We'll check it.
It, it, the gymnasium? Cause it's a whole lot more comfortable than that little room we were in last year.
Yeah, right, the library is very.
Can, we can't do the library because it's public? Isn't that what they said, if you can't?
Um, I think it's the timing, we just have to think about when they're open and what the timing is.
All right.
We'll make it work, we'll make it work, so it's.
Battle of France. Okay. And Estacio, could you post that? So.
Yeah, yeah.
Pressure there. I know you're pri- you're primed to go for that, so if you can just get that posted.
Yeah, I have the location and stuff up, I'll just put the date in.
Yes, thank you, the 29th.
At.
6 o'clock, the tour is at 6.
Okay.
And the meeting is at 7. That's my, thank you.
Yeah, we're meeting. Going to be like my anniversary.
Want to have anything else? See, only, I'm just going to hand out the facilities. So this is the proposal, the actual con, like, we, we agreed to the proposal, but I just, we don't have like a, the contract that you had asked for. But this covers all of the work that they're going to be doing.
One more.
One more, sorry. And, uh, yeah. I just want to take your time, I didn't, I was going to email it and I was like, you know what? I feel like to discuss something in their hand, so.
When do you anticipate having a contract?
So we are meeting next, well, hopefully the, the, the lead architect will be in touch with me next week to set up like the meeting times. Then we're going to have them come in and talk with the board next month about, about, so you can ask questions and do all that.
And we'll have that contract for that meeting?
The contract, yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah.
I mean, just, it's a, it's a general question, right?
Yeah, we just signed, right, I just signed a propos- the proposal, agreeing to the proposal. So the contract itself we should get, but everything is laid out in here, yeah.
Okay, great. And then do we, we, like, I don't have a copy of every contract that we have in the, in the district, like personnel.
No, you probably wouldn't.
Is that something that?
You want every single, like, every human contract and every?
Well, I mean, we have all the contracts, but they've never been distributed to the board members.
Maybe just, maybe just the contracts of the, the general contract, the, uh.
You have the administrative agreements, you have the agreements, like those contracts.
And, yeah, ones that we, the ones we negotiate for.
Yeah, is that what you're talking about? It's just the, the.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I don't need to go historically through this stuff, but because it's coming up, I mean, I definitely would like to.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you definitely.
Historically, no, but all related to personnel, working in the district, yes, please.
If it's not too hard.
It's not hard.
Yet the, the, um, I don't know what they call it, contract services or, you know, the, the, the ones that are separate from the regular.
Okay.
If that's not too.
Are you talking about like our, our OTs?
The one that would, would interest me, uh, the contracted services, yeah.
They're not under the, uh, regular.
So some of them are under the regular teacher's contract and some of them are not.
Yeah, I guess, I, I don't want to distinguish, yeah, anyone, anything that is, any contract.
Personnel.
So in addition to the ones, we're negotiating with three associations, so.